Good morning. It is 10:00 AM on November 8, 2022. We'll call to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. Please stand with me if you're able and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the Constitution stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And before we get started, just a quick announcement, the polls are open today from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. If you have any questions, we can call the auditor's office at 515-382-7210. Happy Election Day, everybody. With that, do I have a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Headends.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Now it's time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can step forward to the table or raise your hand on Zoom. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment number one and move to item number six bid opening for McFarland Lake Restoration. Good morning.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Well, good morning, board.
Good morning, Mike. Oh, don't forget to turn your mics on, please. Thank you.
That's what I'm thinking.
To match up the other ones.
You can make sure they're all. Thank you for your patience.
You bet.
The first bidder is Iowa Earthworks. The bid security is complete. They have acknowledged addendum one. They have included their bidder identity form. Their bidder status form. And Ryan will read the bid amount.
The bid amount for Iowa Earthworks will be $966,074.50.
The next bidder is Aaron's D. Aaron Crane Construction LLC. Again, Aaron Crane Construction. Bid security is complete. They did acknowledge addendum number one. They have included their bidder identity. And their bidder status.
The base bid for Aaron Crane Construction is $130,779.279.00.
Bitter is Construct Incorporated. They have included their bid bond. They have acknowledged addendum number one. They have included their bidder identity. And their status.
The base bid from Construct will be $1,296,386.00.
The next firm is Nagel Construction LLC. They have included their bid security. They have acknowledged addendum one. They have included their bidder identity form. And their bidder status.
Base bid from Nagel Construction is $984,354.90.
The next bidder is JNC Construction LLC. Again, JNC Construction LLC. They have included their bid security. They have acknowledged addendum one. They do have their bidder identity. And their bidder status.
Base bid for JNC Construction, $1,407,966.00.
The next bidder is RW Excavating Solutions. They have included their bid bond. They have acknowledged addendum one. They have included their bidder identity and their status form.
Base bid for RW Excavating Solutions is $1,237,487.14.
The next bid is Healy Excavating. And this is the last bid. They have included a bid bond. They have acknowledged addendum number one. They have included their bidder identity, identity form, and their bidder status form.
Base bid for Healy Excavating is $1,194,025.20.
That concludes the opening of all the bids. We will go back, review, tabulate, and come back next week for a recommendation to award. The we have received bids that did come in below the engineer's opinion of probable cost. So we will be back next week.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the bidders also.
Yeah.
Next, we have consideration of proclamation recognizing November 17 as Story County Philanthropy Day. Supervisor Merkin, would you like to start?
Whereas for 17 years, the Story County Alliance for Philanthropy has created awareness of philanthropic efforts in Story County and recognized over 75 outstanding adult and youth individuals, families, groups, and businesses throughout Story County who have exhibited outstanding financial or leadership support for many charitable causes. And whereas the purpose of the proclamation is to educate the public about the many examples of philanthropy that have occurred and continue to occur in Story County. And whereas the Story County Alliance for Philanthropy creates awareness of philanthropy in Story County throughout the month of November as a part of National Philanthropy Month and
Whereas philanthropy can have many definitions, including adult and youth individuals, family, families, groups, and businesses that volunteer and donate time, effort, leadership, skills, knowledge, property, or money to actively promote human welfare to improve quality of life, which enables everyone to celebrate the extraordinary change that fundraising and philanthropy have helped to create in our world. And whereas annual award categories include individual family philanthropist, business corporate foundation philanthropist, group philanthropist, individual fundraiser, and youth group philanthropist. And whereas there are many organizations committed to creating awareness of and providing recognition of philanthropy in Story County, which include Planning Committee members, Able Up Iowa, Boys and Girls Club of Story County, Child Serve, Cultivating Hope Farms, Friendship Arc, Good Neighbor Emergency Services Assistance, Iowa State Memorial Union, ISU College of Agriculture and Life Sciences, Iowa State University Foundation, Mary Greeley Medical Center Foundation, Octagon Center for the Arts, Story County Community Foundation, the Ark of Story County, the Bridge Home, United Way of Story County, and Youth and Shelter Services and
Whereas the Story County Board of Supervisors recognizes the value of philanthropy in helping many individuals in Story County. Therefore, we, the Story County Board of Supervisors of Story County, do hereby proclaim November 17, 2022, a Story County of Philanthropy Day. On behalf of our community, we encourage all citizens to recognize the many philanthropic efforts of our citizens. I move the proclamation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Headends.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Did you want to say a few words? Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for having us.
It needs to be green. Light needs to be green. Yeah.
Thank you.
We're here, Gina, from Colton Hope Farms.
Charlie Weber from Good Neighbor Emergency Assistance.
Thank you for recognizing, recognizing us today with Story County. Entropy. Thank you. So the Story County Alliance for Philanthropy, the 17th Annual Philanthropy Day Award Recognition Event to recognize those who have exhibited outstanding financial or leadership support for any charitable use in Story County.
And this is the 17th annual one. We had a little interruption with COVID one year. We did a FaceTime Live last year. We heard the proclamation with each of you last year. So we appreciate being back again. We've recognized, as the proclamation said, over 85 different philanthropy efforts in Story County in the last 17 years. So there's a lot of activity and recognition. They're all, all recognition is out on our website, storycountyphilanthropy.org. The day that we're recognizing this year's five winners will be November 17 at Gateway Hotel and Conference Center, 11:30. If anyone can attend, that'd be great. Register soon so we get our meal count in. The, if you have any or need any information, you can call United Way of Story County, that phone number 515-268-5142. Thank you very much, Linda, Latifah, Lisa.
Thank you for bringing it forward again. What was the date?
November 17.
17. Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you hold on, we'll do a picture. We have another. Next, we have consideration of proclamation recognizing November 13 through 19, 2022, as Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in Story County. Supervisor Headends, would you like to start?
Whereas for the past 30 years, the National Coalition for the Homeless and the National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness have sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And whereas the purpose of the proclamation is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing in Story County for very low-income residents, and to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers, as well as community service opportunities for students and school service organizations and
Whereas there are many organizations committed to sheltering and providing supportive services as well as meals and food supplies to the homeless, which include, but are not limited to Assault Care Center Extending Shelter and Support Access, The Bridge Home, Food at First, Good Neighbor Emergency Assistance, Mid-Iowa Community Action, Story County General Assistance, The Hunger Collaboration, Salvation Army, Ventures Affairs, Youth and Shelter Services, as well as various area churches and food pantries. Whereas the, there, the focus of hunger, National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week 2022 continues to volunteer, donate, educate, and
Whereas the intent of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is consistent with the commitment and dedication of the members of the Two Rivers Committee and the Homeless Prevention Team to educate the community and to provide the needed services and support to citizens who suffer from hunger and/or homelessness circumstances. Now, therefore, be it resolved, we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim November 13 through 19, 2022, as Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week in Story County. We recognize that hunger and homelessness continue to be a serious problem for many individuals and families here and encourage all citizens to recognize that many people do not have housing and need support from citizens and private, public, nonprofit service entities. I move the proclamation.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Headends.
Aye.
Basil.
Aye.
Did anybody want to say any words about the proclamation?
Good morning. I'm Sherri Riley from The Bridge Home, part of the leadership team there. And I just wanted to thank you for acknowledging once again the Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. Having been a homeless child when I was 11, I know that it's so important that we keep it in front of people so that they remain educated about what's going on in our county that can help folks. So I, I really appreciate you giving us the time for this. And The Bridge Home and all of those other agencies you mentioned are working very hard to help the citizens of Story County and the Two Rivers region. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and do the picture. We'll do philanthropy first. Yeah. Great. I don't want to mess with your chair. I don't want to mess with your chair. Okay, we have no agency reports. Consideration of
Okay, we have no agency reports. Consideration of minutes from October twenty-five, twenty twenty-two.
I move the October twenty-five, twenty twenty-two minutes as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Edens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions as listed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Edens.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Next, we have consideration of claims.
I move approval of claims as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Edens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Consent agenda.
I move approval of consent agenda items as listed.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Edens.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Next, we have additional items, discussion and consideration of providing identification badges for CICS employees. Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, you can see I kind of gave a brief rundown on what CICS was asking of us. Because currently, you know, our tenants, they fob instead of what all county employees wear, so. Carlet asked if it would be possible to provide identification badges, not only for the employees that work at the Human Services Center, but all CICS employees, which is doable. It's kind of on not the additional employees, but on the plan and facilities management. Been back, Bernard, for about two years is to get our tenants into a identification badge instead of for security purposes, primarily out of the Justice Center when we have big trials. Brought that on. So that aside, I feel that if we did this, the six employees that are tenants of ours, they would just kind of fall under the current policy which they operate under is instead of getting fob, they could get a badge. And we could charge the additional employees, and that would be a non operational badge. Of course, it would have to look different than ours. It wouldn't have any access, so it could simply be we provided with it, we could be provided with a picture. We could print it, and they could mail it to the individual employee. And then any replacement would fall underneath the eleven. That's where we're currently at for what they cost, and that cost is about the same whether it's a fob or a badge. It's like the the fobs, they're a little more money, but they don't have as much labor cost involved to create them. So it's about a wash and there is a benefit to a fob. They are reusable. Once an employee leaves, we can reuse those where the badges we can't. But the life expectancy of the fobs is less because they're on a key ring, so they perpetually wear out and they have to be replaced. So when we look at the history of it, yes, they are reusable, but for the most part, we don't have a stockpile of old fobs that we can reuse, so. Long term, I don't think it's a the reusability plays into the cost.
And you said this was part of part of the plan.
Yes, to have our tenants down the road. Yeah. We're looking at a overall refresh too, because they're due for a redesign. We've talked about updating the picture, you know, various things in there and and looking at changing the policy a little bit to, you know, throw in have an updated picture every so many years, but then I didn't weigh in the weeds on that. But yeah, that is part of our plan. It has been for about two years, but we just kind of pushing it back. We're hoping to have that this FY in front of the board to kind of go over options. And I've spoken with the majority of all of our tenants, and they were all on board with having the identification badge versus the the fob.
I guess my only question would be the need for the additional twenty-nine badges. Is it just because you've got staff coming in and out when they're traveling? That's my my own.
Yeah, we've been talking internally about the need for an ICS staff, like if you because right now we don't have anything that identifies them. We did look at like getting nameplates or something like that, but we really like the idea of the picture ID. So when I visited with Joby about it, one of the things we would want to do is be able to put the CICS logo on that badge as well, along with the staff member's picture in it.
So we're just really providing the service for CICS.
Yeah.
For the IDs.
It is. We we don't have the ability to to make up. We don't have the equipment to do.
Sure.
Mm hmm. Gotcha.
I think it's a good idea. Okay. I would move the approval of providing identification badges for CICS employees as described in the memo.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Edens.
Aye.
Basil. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have discussion and consideration of proposal for a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars received from the Des Moines area MPO for planning consulting services for the implementation of the Housing Action Plan.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just as an FYI, both Andrew Collings and Lucas Young from the Des Moines MPO are on the Zoom if we need to promote them, if you have any questions for either of them. I want to first start by thanking the board for the commitment over the past several years on this endeavor. It really, it's a process that started in two thousand nineteen with commitment by the board to do a revisit the Story County Housing Study update that was done in nineteen ninety-seven. From there, we went through a process to develop a Housing Action Plan internally by staff. And then this fall, the board took action on that and gave staff direction to develop and request for proposals. And that really laid out all the steps that were in the took the steps that were laid out in the Housing Action Plan, asked consultants to respond to how they would approach that and provide assistance to Story County. And that's where we are. It has been a long haul, but there's been commitment by the board throughout all steps. I am very appreciative of as are many others. We did receive a proposal from the Des Moines Metropolitan Planning Organization of Des Moines, obviously. The services as proposed are from December two thousand twenty-two through December two thousand twenty-five, so a three-year contract, essentially, which is what we envisioned when we drafted the request for proposals and truly the Housing Action Plan as well. I did come to the board with the recommendation that this be funded through ARPA funding mechanism, and I did at that point have a target of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That was just kind of my best guess scenario. The proposal that was received did come back at one hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. We had some discussions with the consultant. That is a not to exceed amount, even though it's more than what I predicted. I think it is well within the mean or well within the the ideas and plan that's set forth. Mine was definitely a best case scenario or best case best guess. Sorry. I do want to just share a couple things from the proposal, if you would allow me to. The approach that's put forth by the Des Moines MPO.
What page are you on?
That's a page twelve. I I knew that from looking down. The fourth paragraph down. I just want to read from it because it really does does get to the heart of the approach that's been delineated in the Housing Action Plan. The demand from Story County in the effort is significant. The Housing Action Plan will require many hours, especially in this first in the first year. The first year will be will be important to lay the groundwork and to develop the tools labeled as evaluation later in the work plan tables. So that I I mentioned that because we've always said that this is an ambitious plan. And I'm I'm confident that the Des Moines MPO recognizes that as well and that they they state that. And that helps give me some assurance that they're ready to go around with this. Their approach is built into three distinct groups. They look at valuation, policy creation, and program creation. There's a lot of overlap in the tools that both are in the Housing Action Plan and how they prioritize those tools. If approved today, a contract would come on your agenda next week for formal approval and starting the process, working with them. Part of the approach that I envision is that there will be weekly meetings between staff and consultant for the first six months of the process, really to recognize that how important those first few months are, and then transition to biweekly meetings. And then, of course, as it's ARPA funding, you'll be receiving quarterly reports through that process and then bring forward additional reporting. And the payment structure that would be defined in the contract would be quarterly payments, again, a not to exceed amount of a hundred ninety-one thousand in total three calendar years roughly. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions either. Just just want to say thank you. I know a lot of work has gone into this, and I know a lot of work went into this by county staff, and a lot of work went into a proposal from the MPO. I I just appreciate all the work that is being done to really make some progress. See this through then. So thank you.
And I also thank you, Leanne, for, I know you met again to really kind of identify and hone in what we were specifically looking looking at to fit kind of within that budget that we were kind of targeting at.
It's work that's urgent because there are people who are unhoused in our communities. But at the same time, we want to do it right. And I look at the three years, and I think three years with all the steps there, three years is ambitious. But I'm glad to know they are confident they can do all of it in three years and to front load it the way they are. Makes a lot of sense. So I'm I'm glad to see a plan that's really going to bring bring this to fruition. Thank you for all your work on it.
You're welcome. And I it's not been me alone. Definitely multitudes, other people involved. Amelia with Planning and Development, Sandra with Board of Supervisors Office, then Greg Pickla and Brenda Dreyer with the Ames Economic Development Commission. Even Carla was three years ago involved in this, three or four years ago. It's been a concerted effort by many people. I'm just here presenting.
And you've pulled it together as well. So, yes, and there are several people who have contributed mightily.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm I'm excited. I think this really shows a commitment just all the way around, a commitment to our communities, a commitment to our county, a commitment to to smart growth and and careful growth and economic development and workforce development, everything. I I am super excited to be here right now. With that, we entertain a motion.
I move approval for up to a hundred ninety-one thousand from for the Des Moines area MPO for planning consulting services for the implementation of the Housing Action Plan as discussed.
Second.
From ARPA.
Oh, from ARPA.
Yes.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Edens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Thank you.
And I even wrote down ARPA.
Next, we have consideration of FY twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight Capital Improvements Plan Process and Timeframe.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see you again.
Hi, Leanne.
I cannot believe we're here already. It is truly amazing how fast this year has gone, but we are ready to kick off the next round of the capital improvement planning process. On your agenda is the overall process approach, which has been the same as past years. Last year was the first year we used the Form Center on our website. I'll do that again because I think that was a lot easier for individuals to use to apply and submit materials. The timeframe is still on your agenda as tentative. I'm glad I did because there's already been a change for the work session with the Board of Supervisors in December. That should will actually be December twelfth rather than the original date that's on the agenda. I don't really have much. I mean, this has been pretty familiar to us all over the years. Once I get the draft available of all the projects, I'll get that, use the S Drive and get information to the board and and all the subcommittee members as well. Do you have any questions on the process?
I guess my only question would be since you're we're moving the meeting from December first to December twelfth, I'm assuming there'll be other things that will be adjusted then. Is that correct?
No, no, that's the only the the twelfth is the only one. I've already I've already scheduled the CIP Review Committee Meeting.
Okay.
And so those are in people's calendars. The second one, that's the week of December eleventh. I don't remember what date that is actually. That will only be if needed.
Okay.
So that follows that work session. And that's really for our staff to see if there's any additional information that we need to bring forward to the board.
So that'll be just change that one to December twelfth. The one that's if needed.
Oh, that one's our it's 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 already set after December twelfth.
Okay.
I move approval of the FY twenty-four twenty-eight CIP Plan Process and Timeframes with any minor adjustments on dates that may be necessary.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Merkin.
Aye.
Edens.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have discussion and consideration of Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-five extending the Ames Urban Fringe Plan twenty-eight E Agreement to January one, twenty twenty-three. Hey, Amelia.
So Ames and Gilbert will till January first. I think currently Ames staff is working on changes to the plan, anticipates going to their city council in November with those, and is hoping for some resolution in December on the fringe plan. So that's why January is being requested as the date. So this is just extending the current plan.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions.
I move approval of Resolution twenty-three dash thirty-five extending the Ames Urban Fringe Plan twenty-eight E Agreement to January first, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Edens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil. Aye. Next, we have discussion and consideration of property cleanup, demolition of structures, and debris removal at five six three one four one hundred and seventieth Street in Ames. A draft RFP.
Um, so this is a new process for us. We in our department seek voluntary compliance on code enforcement and work really hard to work with property owners to clean up issues. We've been working on this property since twenty nineteen. We've issued many citations through that process, and at this point we've actually gone to court with the property owners, and the court has several times now issued a continuance, given them an additional thirty days to clean up the property. Most recently, Ethan filed a resistance to that continuance because it's just gone on with no work happening. And so tomorrow, there's another court date that he will attend where we've asked the court to just require cleanup and allow us, the county, to go in and make that happen. So we are we have an RFP, a draft RFP before you which requests proposals from a company to remove sheds and a mobile home on a property. It's up on the screen here. It's on one seventieth and five hundred and sixty-third. It's right by Soper's Mill. I've got a few more to. So this is one of the sheds. This is just from the right of way on one seventieth. There's several campers. A mobile home that's kind of leaning towards the right of way. It's right on the line, in fact. And there's other debris.
None of none of these structures are being lived in.
No, nope. The owners live in in Boone County. So it's an abandoned site. If we did an RFP, got proposals, it was cleaned up, you know, the county would have to pay for that, but then we can have a resolution assessing that back on the property, their taxes. There's some question of if, you know, that could cause it to go to tax sale. If the property was sold either through a tax sale process or just sold, then at that point, the taxes would have to be paid, that assessment. But that could be a pretty long-term payback, just so we're all aware. Um, I do anticipate this will cost over twenty-five thousand dollars. I did reach out to the City of Ames, which does this, um, pretty frequently, and they sent me a list of how much it costs to demolish homes and accessory structures, um, in past projects they've taken on, and it looked like it was arranged between twenty and forty-five thousand dollars. Um, but with this site, there's other debris, there's appliances, and, um, it might be in that range, but it could be at the top end.
How big a property is this?
It's just an acre.
Just an acre. Okay.
And do we know why? What the issue is with not seeing any movement?
Um, I, they just say they haven't had the time or the money.
Okay.
This has been going on since when?
Twenty nineteen.
Okay, so three years.
Yeah, and that's just with, you know, my department and Jerry before me, but there's been previous code enforcement cases, you know, back into the early two thousands on this property as well.
So are you wanting to draft an RFP in hopes that as you said, Ethan's going before the courts tomorrow, that that will be approved?
Yeah, yep.
So that you can move right after that, because obviously you wouldn't be doing anything if that's not upheld?
Right. Um, I guess, you know, we can, if you approve the draft RFP today, I mean, that will be presented tomorrow. Ethan sent that, I think part of it too is, you know, we're moving forward to clean up this property. That's a pretty clear message during the two weeks, three weeks this RFP is posted, if the property owner would like to take this on during that period, and we don't have to accept right, any proposals.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then if, you know, the proposals come back and it's, it, it's way more costly than we anticipate, we have to work through the budget amendment with Lisa, we can do that on the back end. This is just the first time we've had to do this, so there's a lot of questions about how much it will cost.
Looks pretty thorough to me.
Yeah, Ethan, um, reached out to other counties and, and provided a lot of assistance, making sure we covered our bases here.
Is there any chance that there are any toxic waste kind of things on this property?
Um, yes. Sure. Appliances free on from refrigerators, I I think the RFP is really limited to what can be considered junk under our definition of a junkyard in Story County. So we're, there's a house in the property that's also, um, pretty much falling down, but that doesn't, we don't have a property maintenance code. That doesn't violate our definition or our allowances, so we're really just focused on the mobile home, the sheds, because that's construction material, the campers and any other junk vehicles. Um, so I think it, we are pretty limited in our scope here. I, I don't think we'd be getting into, we're not cleaning up a hazardous waste site, because that's the violation, right? That's not within our scope here.
Okay, and the house is not inhabited either?
Um, but without, yeah, without a property maintenance code requiring.
It's not part of that.
I have no further questions.
I don't either.
Neither.
I would move approval of the, uh, RFP as presented.
Second. Moved and seconded, Merkin.
Aye.
Edens.
Aye.
Basil, aye. Thank you, thanks for all of your work on that.
Thanks, Amelia.
And next, we have departmental reports, we have general assistance quarterly report.
Morning.
Good morning. Okay, so I'm just gonna hit the highlights a little bit. Um, so you can see all the numbers, I think, and, and that kind of thing on here, we, um, we did a quarter, July, August, September, um, assisted fourteen more households than we did the, the quarter prior to that, so that's quite a few. Um, that tends to be a busy time for us anyway, because the leases change over and, and that kind, during that time. Um, we went to an automated, um, system for our phone um, over that quarter, and it allows people to call in and get more directly to who they want to speak to. Um, and then they can still choose to schedule appointments, um, by, um, option one, I think, or two, which one, but, um, then that way, um, when, when they want to speak to Wendy or Brett or myself, just directly, there's an option for them to do that versus going through, um, Melissa. So, um, I haven't heard anything negative about that, so I'm guessing that people are okay with it. So, we, we're going with that. Um, also during that quarter, towards the end of September, I, we met with our collaborator, collaborators on the centralized intake program, um, since that's been going for a little bit over a year, um, to just kind of talk about, you know, what's been working, um, what hasn't, and that kind of thing. Um, we came up with a few things that we needed to kind of work on, um, after that. Uh, and so it'll probably be an ongoing process, yet, uh, there are just things that we we change on a regular basis, um, just internally with, you know, who's got money available, um, which populations they're looking to assist at this time, you know, that kind of thing. And then just the management of the, um, of the amount of people that are coming in and applying, I mean, we're still averaging about a hundred applications a month. Um, and so it's, it's very active still. Any questions?
I, I was just curious about the substance abuse services. The reporting period, that's the, this first quarter, right?
That would be July, August, September, yep.
So it says.
Oh, and then year to date.
Yeah, that's okay, okay.
That's probably a typo.
I thought, okay, perfect, I was just wondering if they were on a different calendar.
Yep.
Sorry. I don't have any other questions.
If that's the only time I screwed up the year-to-date, I'm feeling pretty good about it, because I was, that was tricky for me, because I was like
I have no questions.
I don't either.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, we have no other reports, any upcoming agenda items?
No, I don't think so.
All right, now it's time for public comment number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on comments due to the requirements of open meetings law, uh, but may do so in the future. Anyone wishing to make public comment, you can step forward to the table or raise your hand up soon. Seeing no one will close public comment number two, and move to ladies on assignments, committee meeting updates, announcements from
Thursday, I'm going to have two open houses for the Headwaters and the South Skunk, uh, Watershed Management Authority. There's one at from eleven to one, at Story City at their community center, and then another one, I think about five to seven, I believe, or four to six, but in the evening up at Jewel, at the Jewel Country Club. So I'm probably gonna miss the Historical Alliance meeting that morning, because I need to be, I think it's at ten. And I need to be in Story City at eleven, so I might not make it for that. Um, but I'm looking forward to that, that we're gonna, hopefully have a lot of landowners there, have a lot of interested people there, talk about water quality and voluntary efforts that we can do and how we can make those happen. So that's kind of the culmination of a year's work, very excited about that. And then Friday is Veterans Day, and Monday? I think I got some meetings. Yeah, I've got some meetings with emergency management and a conservation board in the evening on Monday. So that's from here to there. And Tuesday's a limited agenda, correct? Next Tuesday, I will not be here because I have a personal appointment.
Okay.
Out of town.
Uh, my busiest day is Thursday this week, I have a, uh, workforce board meeting beginning at eight AM, and then the Historical Alliance, uh, that I'll attend, uh, I see that quarterly orientation, I like to try to step in if we can on that. Friday, as was mentioned, is Veterans Day, so I would just like for all that they, all that they do and have done, and, uh, wish everybody a good, good week.
Yes, um, and, uh, remember, we are recognizing Project Greenlight right now, so green lights and, and with windows our businesses, um, that's, that's a, a thank you and acknowledgement to our veterans and all the work and sacrifice that they and their families have given us. Yeah, I've just got random meetings. Um, just one more reminder that, uh, polls are open until eight today. And if you have questions, you can call the auditor's office, five one five three eight two seven two one zero. Um, with that, I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, Edens.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye.
Basil, aye, we're adjourned.